The May 19th meeting of the City of Milton's Common Council. Can I get confirmation of the appropriate meeting notice?
The meeting was noticed here at City Hall, the Piggly Wiggly and Dave's Ace Hardware.
We're going to skip down to item number three, public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. Is there anybody that wants to present?
I would.
Okay.
I just want to address a couple things on 5C and 5B.
Okay. Do you want to do it now or do you want to wait till 5C and 5B?
I can do it now.
Okay. You can go ahead. We've left that kind of open.
Well, I'll just go ahead and make my comments.
Okay. Sure. Okay.
Larry Lane 216, North Janesville Street, Milton. My first comment is to further explain my approach and try to look at the employment process here in Milton. I'm a big believer in democracy. My dad is World War II veteran. He fought for three and a half years for democracy. My father-in-law also was a World War II veteran. He served for three and a half years as well for democracy. I consider it a privilege that many of my friends served in Vietnam and Korea for democracy. And one of the basic premises of democracy from my history and my studies of American past and present is that we provide citizens as much opportunity to have say in our governance as we can in all areas of our life. And so I just think it's very important that citizens' participation is encouraged. I recognize that there's adversity. We probably have a perfect example of that tonight in attendance with citizens here. But that doesn't excuse me or anyone else from not trying to give people the opportunity. So that was my opinion. I have no offense to the gentleman who pointed to the position. I have no offense to Mayor Welch or any of them. It's why you know that. My intention was that I was concerned and I wanted to try to provide some impact to that process for the future. The second one is the participation at meetings. I think it would be very helpful if right before the council makes a decision on a major issue, you've talked about it, you've explained what's going on, you've gotten input from experts and from Mr. Hullock and other people. And then, I'm sorry, am I talking over you?
Yeah, I can hear you fine. Can the rest of the council hear you?
Can you all hear me, Dave? Can you hear me?
No, I can't hear at all.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I don't know if it's, I don't think it's plugged in.
It's not on.
It's not on.
Underneath.
I'll talk louder. I can talk louder. But I think it would be helpful right before you make a decision if you would give people in the audience a chance to comment. Very briefly, 30 seconds, whatever you want to say. To give people the opportunity to comment.
Oh, thank you. The opportunity to comment before you vote on a major issue. Again, I know people have time before the meetings, but with our world, the way it is, how often do you get a call from a constituent on an issue right before you vote on it? And a lot of times the constituent like myself doesn't really know the background and all the discussion that went on and all the behind the scenes kind of things. So I'm just offering that. That might be a way that you could handle that at a meeting. If people take the time to come to the meeting, obviously they have interest in the item or items. The third thing is just an idea. You know, I've gone to a lot of meetings here and I know the packets are out there on the internet, a lot of the information. But I think it would really be helpful once in a while to have a couple copies of some of the materials that you have in front of you. Not items for closed session meetings, but other items that you're working on or talking about. A good example is I went to the joint town and Milton, City of Milton, Town of Milton fire meeting that was held recently. And you had a lot of information in front of you that I in the audience and everyone else sitting there didn't have in front of them. So when you don't have information, you begin to conjecture and you begin to second guess what's going on behind the scenes. So I'm a big believer in that. So it might be helpful if you did that. I'm not saying you should have to, but it's an idea. Because not everybody has a printer and when you go to the library where my daughter works, a lot of people in our community don't have a computer, at least based on the usage of computers at the library. So they can't get that information or they don't see that information. So just an idea. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any further comment? We're going to move up.
5B.
5B. And we're going to address that next, discussion and possible action on resolution, authorizing entry into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement relating to the Wisconsin Investment Series Cooperative and authorizing participation in the investment programs of the fund. And we have a presenter, right?
She's here if you guys have any questions. But as I kind of addressed in my memo, this kind of came about because a lot of the conferences and other things that we've been attending, IRS is really starting to come down on arbitrage rules and other things related to tax exempt municipal debt. And this is a company that will basically do some of the legwork for us for a small percentage of investment income that we probably would not be able to get on our own or it would take us a lot of time to seek out and diversify the portfolio. And so I think that this is a good opportunity to invest our $1.35 million that we just took out from the two local banks on the most recent borrowing and invest it and have them monitor the expenditures to make sure that we're in compliance with IRS regulations. And Sarah's here from PMA if you guys have any specific questions regarding the fund or investments. All the investments that we would invest in are allowable under Wisconsin statutes. And some of the preliminary interest rates that she shot over to me are three to four times what we can get on our own. So I think it's a worthwhile program that everyone kind of benefits from.
And just to add on that, you know, it's kind of an odd situation where it may seem odd for the public, but when we borrow money such as what we did for the public, for the library and for Parkview Drive, we borrow that money so we have it in hand today, but we don't intend to use it for six months, a year, 18 months, things of that nature. So we have really opportunity, we have a couple opportunities. We could sit on it and collect nothing or we could utilize the services that PMA is willing to provide us where we might actually be able to earn a little money on that money while it sits there. So it's not just sitting idle. So it's an opportunity, one, that we could have, make sure that we have the oversight that we need as a tax exempt loan, but also an opportunity to kind of maybe even leverage that into additional dollars that we wouldn't have been able to get. So it really turns out to be a win-win. It's a pretty common practice that most municipalities undertake and it's something that I, you know, I thought was a good idea. So we brought PMA in to have this conversation and I left it up to Dan's wisdom to see if it was just a sales pitch or not. And if Dan says it's good, then I think we're in pretty good shape.
And I will add, I just did a $900,000 transfer from the state investment pool yesterday into our account at First Community. And right away this morning I got an email from the bank president over there saying, "How long are you going to keep it here? Because we kind of don't want $900,000 sitting there because that costs us money to insure and all that other good stuff." And I said, "Don't worry, it won't be there long." So, you know, I did check to see if the local institutions had any interest in keeping a large deposit on hand and there really is no want or need for that. So you don't have to feel bad about taking money out of the community because, you know, First Community or Bank of Milton want it. I mean, we have several accounts with both places, but they don't want large balances right now. So.
What's the interest rate?
.05%.
So when would we come back to review if, to make sure that we're actually, this is effective and efficient and we're not paying out more in fees than we're earning?
We would not pay out more in fees because the fees are a percentage of the actual investment earnings. So if we earn like $100 in investment fees, they'll take 15 bucks. So that's how.
And it's not locked up. We can get it at any time.
It depends on what we invest in. Some of them are going to be like nine month, one year CD type thing. Some of them are going to be short term. What we've done with the, the way I've kind of laid out the 1.35 million is I got a draft schedule of anticipated needs for the library project and staggered that into investments ranging from six months to a year. And then we know like Parkview is going to get going sooner rather than later. So we're going to keep that liquid in the money market. So it's all based on the needs of the two projects.
Well, I would recommend resolution to Milton, team building and authorizing City of Milton entry into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement relating to the Wisconsin Investment Series Cooperative and authorizing participation in the investment programs of the fund.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further questions or discussion on this item? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against, the motion passed. All right. Just had a quick question there. Okay. All right. So welcome everyone to your first strength-based team building exercise. Do you want to do that first? Okay, let's do the slideshow first, then we'll do the team building. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
So Linda and I and Nancy and a few of you others were spending a lot of time and I can only say who I actually saw down there. I know Teresa went down and Inga was down there forever and Al was in and out. But and our police staff were, spent a lot of time down in the Civil War days. And one of the cool things is our Civil War days was actually part of our commercial that we just had put out on Charter. And so one of the things that I wanted to make sure that the whole council saw was what this commercial looked like, how it promoted the event, and then also just a recap of the whole Civil War days. So Inga and I and Cory took pictures and Al so graciously put together a slideshow so everybody could see everything that took place this weekend.
So just so, a little bit more background on the television commercial. The television commercial was put together by our tourism committee and the tourism committee had a, has a total budget of $5,000 and they dedicated $3,000 to the Charter television ad. If folks remember back in February of this year, the council approved, authorized the expenditure of that fund. So what we're about to see is the outcome of that ad. Ultimately, we're going to have over 200 showings of that ad and you'll be able to see them on Charter Communications on the Weather Channel and on the Travel Channel. So what we have is really two ads. They're the same ad, but the second ad that you'll see actually has what's called a donut in it. And that allows us to advertise a specific event or activity that takes place in the city on a timely basis. So I'll play the first ad. So this is the full ad here. And hopefully, Dave, you can hear this.
Yep.
Hold on just a moment. Okay.
The history. The proud. Whole lakes. The fun.
Trying to get the audio to go up. Yeah, and it's supposed to send it through the TV too. Oh, it's all delayed. All right, we'll start it from the beginning again. It's a really short commercial.
The history. The proud. Whole lakes. The fun. The music. The camping. The unique. Visit Milton from Highway 59 on the west side or Exit 8 off Highway 26 bypass on the east side. Enjoy Milton and take a little home today.
So that's the full 30-second commercial that anybody can see on Charter. And then what we did was what you're about to see here, and this was, this is the ad that aired for the week coming up to Civil War Day. So you'll see a little bit of a different.
The proud. Whole lakes. The fun. Come to the Civil War Living History Days, May 15 through the 17th at the Milton House Museum. Call or go to miltonhouse.org. Visit Milton from Highway 59 on the west side or Exit 8 off Highway 26 bypass on the east side. Enjoy Milton and take a little home today.
So you see that second commercial has the donut feature and it advertised the Civil War days. And we were able to work with Charter Communications to get a pretty remarkable deal on that. And what we allowed is for nonprofits to actually increase their advertising through that opportunity. And they can even add additional plays to that, to those videos and put it on different channels and at different times than what we have that first commercial showing. So in this example, for Cory from the Milton House pitched in additional dollars to have more plays and on different channels of that specific Civil Wars commercial. And we plan to do this all summer long. And there'll be other events. It's open to all nonprofits. So potentially the gathering place could put an event on there. Chicken barbecue will likely be on there. The Fourth of July parade will likely be on there. So we'll play those all summer long and get, you know, hopefully additional attention to Milton, the community, but also those events that happen in Milton throughout the summer. So in regards to the Civil War days that the mayor referenced before, everybody probably quite heard quite a bit about it and hopefully was able to attend it this weekend. But overall, it was a three-day event. There was over 2,000 students that were present on Friday. And you'll see in the pictures, it was, there was quite a crowd. The weather held out for it. It was great. On Saturday, there was reenactments, live music, pancake breakfast, concert at the night, at night. And then on Sunday, there was the church service and the walking tour as well. And as the mayor referenced, we were able to get a lot of photos of that event. So I can't really narrate these photos as good as everybody who was there, but I figured I'd just put in some of the good ones. A lot of these are from Cory and a lot of these are from Anissa herself. So obviously, these are the school days. A lot of kids out there, when we were down there during the day, this is a pretty good scene. There was just a lot of kids all over, all over the whole grounds enjoying the activities. They had stations, stations to stations. They moved out of, how many stations were there, Linda?
There was 23 stations.
23 stations. So, and one of them was the cannon. I think that was most likely the most popular one. So that shot off every 20 minutes on Friday and then a couple times on Saturday as well. And I don't know if it went off on Sunday or not. So again, just pictures of kind of the kids enjoying the reenactment. When I first pulled up on Friday, there was a lot of kids standing there with what appeared to be guns, but they weren't, they weren't real, obviously. So I got a little concerned about that. I didn't see Chesmore, so I knew we must be okay. There was a presentation. An individual came and gave a live performance on both Friday and Saturday. Here's just some example of their little campsites. I don't think they actually slept in those, did they?
Yes.
Wow, that's good. Good thing it didn't rain.
And I might also add, if I could, a lot of these reenactors have done this, their families have done this throughout the years.
Here's pictures from the pancake breakfast on Saturday morning. Inga, you said you had 130 people come through the pancake breakfast?
132.
All right. All right. And this was a live reenactment up at College Park, right? So those first couple of photos were on Friday and now we're into Saturday.
I had a chance to talk to some of those gentlemen. They actually were 150, at the 150th reunion of Gettysburg. I had been there to visit a couple of years ago. It was very interesting talking to them.
So then on Saturday night, then there was a band out on Janesville Street. And it's just a picture from the top of the Milton House, kind of show the park. And then on Sunday, there was more reenactments and the walking tour of the cemetery. Just a couple of pictures in the cemetery. And then this is my favorite one of all. This just goes to show that we had, that even the volunteers had fun. That's Linda and Don. You guys remember Don, right? So that's all I had for the slideshow pictures from the week. So.
Can you email those to Dave?
Yeah. Dave, I'll send you this PowerPoint presentation so you can see the photos.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah?
And that microphone is still on?
Yes, it is.
Okay, perfect. So I have some exercises. This will be something that we're going to probably be for every city council meeting to help us build strength-based rapport, be more cohesive. We're going to getting along better as a team, not agreeing, work on our, necessarily, work on our communication skills. And we'll keep doing this, I don't know, maybe for six to 10 weeks. It only takes five to 10 minutes before each city council meeting. And another exciting thing that we have available to us that Al's going to be setting up is a council training session on key described of the other, the colors training.
Yeah, what, basically what the mayor has asked that I do is look into a kind of a team building exercise that's led by a consultant that we have through the City of Milton through our EAP, which is our Employee Assistance Program. So it's a service that we actually already pay for and they will come and provide various trainings for us. They do it, they do it for the staff all the time and we asked them that they could extend those training opportunities to the council. And they agreed. So we'll have that opportunity. And the specific training that the mayor's asked that I look into is a training called the Colors Training. And it's something that I've done a number of times in my career. I know Alena's done it. And it really talks about the different personality types and you get to learn as much about yourself as you do everybody else. And it really is an interesting process. So hopefully, we're going to schedule something for that maybe as early as June. And it's going to depend obviously on everybody's schedule. So.
So we all have that to look forward to. And I'm excited about this because it's positive strength-based processes. It's something that I'm familiar with and I know that it does help to move along, root processes in a more effective, a more efficient way. And also just a more goal for focus. So it's not likely that you're going to, that you're going to love this the first time around. I don't even know if you will like it. You will generally probably feel a little bit uncomfortable and put on the spot. But over time, we'll all get used to this process. It's one that I've gone through several times, so I know how it works and I know that it does work. The exciting thing about this is it's evidence-based. And so we've, I've worked with this before. So the first thing that we're going to do, and I did leave Mark off the hook on this. So I know he's thanking me.
It's not in his contract anyway.
But I'll add Lieutenant Chesmore because I wasn't sure who was going to end up being.
A new lip and catch.
This side of the table. And we can add and delete people. And so I don't know, Lauren may never come back to me. So anyways, so the first part of this process is we're all going to go around and we're going to name, and I'm going to write them down, something positive that's happened to you personally this last week, this last few weeks, last month. And we're going to start with Howie. Just, you can just pick one if you want. Anything. It can be absolutely anything. But you had to be personally, you know, involved that it was positive. Okay.
There. All right.
Dan?
Our neighbor, our neighbors, we helped each other plant, they offered to help us with some landscaping and reciprocated. So it felt good.
All right, Dave, did you hear all of that?
Yep.
Okay, you're up.
Well, I have two things. I got some positive news on medical issues this week and also got my invitation to my son's wedding.
Exciting. Jeremy?
Well, it's the most recent, the group of Milton boys that I'm coaching for rec baseball moved to 3-0 yesterday.
Maxine?
Oh, well. Maxine was able to get up every morning and eat breakfast and make it through the whole day. All week long. That's positive.
Al?
Maxine took mine.
You were going names that I remember.
Boy, I mean, there's a lot of stuff. I think most folks know that we're expecting our first child in October and everything's going very well with that. We continue to get good news and it's very easy for me. Things are going well with that. So that's generally exciting. It's a boy.
Okay, I'm.
The nice thing is I can use that until October.
No, we're saving these and we're starting over each week. Okay. For me, I got all, well, almost all the invites out to Teddy's graduation that I hope takes place.
When does he have to leave for service?
December. December. Alena?
Okay, this one's a little personal, but it happened today. So unfortunately, my ex-husband and I could not avoid a custody trial, but it went in my favor today.
Congratulations. Teresa?
I got to spend a whole day with our six-month-old granddaughter.
Nancy?
I spent an exciting hour at Mark's legal firm.
I spent an exciting hour at Mark's legal firm getting our wills updated.
She lived in a diner.
Yes, well, we find that when you want to have a stock certificate, say, transfer on death, you have to get a medallion seal from the bank, which is not easy, but we learned all sorts of things.
Linda?
Well, and this also is personal. I'm very happy to say that my father-in-law had a successful heart surgery and is doing well in Arizona.
Lieutenant Chesmore?
Well, I'm blessed by seeing all the community five days a week that I'm here. Personally, last weekend, we spent three days camping with my family. Usually, our first camping trip, we do all by ourselves, so it reminds me how important my family is to me because we spent the whole weekend together.
Cool.
Inga, geez, thank you.
Inga? Larry, you're welcome to participate.
You guys are doing a great job.
I just had my two-year wedding anniversary yesterday.
Congratulations. I didn't, well, he didn't even know this was probably coming either. Okay, so this one is, requires a little bit of thinking sometimes because sometimes we can't think of these things off the top of our heads. And this is more of just an open thing where I'm not going to go necessarily around the room, but what we do is we name the strengths of each member of our team present. And it can be, it can be anything. It can be their personal life, their work life, just anything that you've witnessed as a strength. So, we're going to start with Howie. Howie doesn't have to talk about himself now, but we all get to talk about Howie. So, I can go first, or if anybody else has something they want to do first?
I'll go first. I would like to say very knowledgeable about the city and its inner and outers.
And we'll do like three strengths of each person. I'm going to say that I think Howie is very friendly.
It sounds like a heck of a softball player, too.
Now, we get to do Dan next.
He knows numbers.
Inga took everybody's.
He's Cubs man. I wouldn't say strengths.
Well, I think...
Some years. Yeah, I was going to say that, that also means he's thick-skinned.
All right, I got it. Boy, that was quick. Knows his numbers, Cubs fan, thick-skinned and patient.
All right, Dave, we get to do Dave now. Dave, Teresa thinks you're very knowledgeable.
I'd say in my eight months on the job, Dave has been one individual that I know I can always count on, and I can always count on him to, you know, well, to shoot straight and be consistent, which is very important for somebody in my position.
And he has a very calming voice. My kids said that they could not believe he was not Brokaw. It's like, he sounds exactly like that newsman Brokaw. So I'm just saying that you have a very calming voice.
And a sinister laugh, apparently.
Doesn't require much elbow.
Okay, now we get to do Jeremy.
We don't know Jeremy that well.
I too am a Cub fan.
That would be a strength.
I didn't hear him.
He's a Cubs fan.
I think that Jeremy is a great dad. He's very involved with both of his kids' sports and activities.
And I can say in our conversations that we've had that I also think that Jeremy is open-minded, and he is eager to try out and learn new things.
Maxine? I think that Maxine has one of the best memories of anybody I have ever met. I think I can ask her about any question about the history of Milton, and she knows. And when she thinks of Mark's stuff, she'll let me know it, too, so I really appreciate that. I mean, I enjoy talking to Maxine.
I enjoy listening to her. She's got the sweetest voice.
Oh, come on.
I'd say as the first female council member in the history of Milton, she's, you know, groundbreaking and a trendsetter and, you know, a progressive, progressive individual.
And if Don was here, he'd say, "And she's the oldest one."
What's that a lot?
He does. He likes to rub that in.
Okay, Al's up next.
Best boss in the world.
She's at the bottom far pretty high, that's what I think.
But he needs to get a new razor.
Got to keep it strength-based.
Patient.
Okay, the mayor is next.
Outgoing, extremely bright.
Alena? I would say she, she knows her elections.
She's a quick learner.
Hey, Teresa. I think that Teresa is very supportive of all of our families. Based on her background, she has done a very good job of doing that.
Knows everyone.
And she doesn't like to mess around.
You say she's straight to the point?
Yeah. I can raise it, yes.
Well, yeah.
Nancy?
I, we heard somebody say this week about Nancy, and I would agree, she's an advocate for the community.
And active in the events that take place in the community. Always there.
I would say she's very generous.
Linda? She has like the most energy of us all.
Passionate.
Lieutenant Chesmore?
And there's not very many of those strengths out there.
I would say you care a lot about your family and put them as a priority.
When Chief Labor left and he told me that Lieutenant Chesmore was going to be in charge, he said that he is one of the most dependable and trustworthy people you'd meet, and he has not done anything to disprove those comments. You've always discussed something when I can, I can think of it.
Yes.
When I started patrol, when we were delivering packets.
Inga?
She has a lot of energy.
Yes. Community involvement all the way around.
She's often the voice of reason out of City Hall, believe it or not. You should see the things she won't let me get away with.
I also think she is super organized. That concludes our first portion of our building activity. There will be one activity to wrap up our meeting with, and it won't take very long because I know y'all have, it'll be easy for you to think of positive things. So I want to thank you, and we'll do a different version of this, and it'll go quicker. We won't always do these, these big ones, so maybe five to 10 minutes at the beginning of city council meetings. So thank you very much for all your participation. Is there a motion to approve the consenting agenda?
I would like a couple things brought down.
Sure.
Item 4A and also 4D2.
So that is the common council meeting minutes from May 5.
Right.
And 4D2 is the planning commission item, which was the approval of the site plan for 927 West High Street.
Right. On, do we want to approve that? And I have a correction of the minutes on 5C. The funding, it says that the motion was carried unanimously. I voted no on the funding for the fire commission.
So that was, she's referring to the meeting minutes from the May 5 meeting, and 5C is the discussion of possible action authorizing the funding of the Milton Joint Fire Commission contract with RW Management.
Yes, and I voted no on that. And also, I would like to ask if we couldn't have more of the discussion on the minutes. When the minutes are published, Robert Rules of Orders says that it should have more information. Like, all we have is the action of the motions. We used to have different, like, on the conversation, we had a very good conversation about a debate, or actually, about our signing up for, to be able to speak, and it doesn't relate that, and I think the majority of the council was against having that signature. So, I would, I would like to have, see if we couldn't have more on the minutes.
I'm wondering if, Alena, if you have the chance, you can look at just what other city councils are size and...
I actually have done that. I was very surprised when I came here to see what was in the minutes. It's completely contrary to everything I've been trained to do. The minutes are only supposed to record what you acted on, not what you spoke about, what you acted on. So, I've been trained to do it that way, and it's actually very ill-advised to be trying to make transcripts. So, that is not how I do minutes, because...
But the Robert Rule says if they're published, you can have more detail.
I have been strongly advised against it. I'm not going to be liable for this. I will record the actions that the council takes, and that is the votes.
But any other committee or any other organization, all lists things like that. For years, that's been the...
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say any other. In fact, I also was very surprised when I came to Milton, the level of what I would consider to be subjectivity in the meeting minutes. You know, you can't, you can't record items of fact in a subjective manner. When you say, you feel all of the council members were in support of you, there wasn't a motion, so we can't be certain of that. So I would be hesitant in my position to direct the clerk to provide that level of subjectivity in the minutes. It's not what I was at all used to. I was surprised when I came here. In Janesville, it's just action items, and Beloit's just action items. I know that that's how it's been done in Milton, but I would be concerned, and potentially Mark could add to that. I was concerned when I saw it, when I came here, because there's a lot, there was a lot of subjectivity in there.
So I don't know, is this something that's on the agenda that we're supposed to be discussing?
It was on the agenda. The minutes are on the agenda, so...
But I'm wondering if this, because we certainly couldn't bring in someone to train us on best practices if the council would like to have a training on what the best practices are. There's someone from the state that does a training, right?
I think it also says that you can adopt your own procedure.
Well, here's my take. We want to do best evidence-based practices. So we can bring, I'll have Al look into bringing someone to do a brief presentation for us. And we can put that on another agenda item.
There's never any record of what was... There's never any record of what was said or what.
This is recorded. That's why it's recorded. That's not what the minutes are for.
And we have it all on, it's, we're on YouTube, and it's my understanding that Alana did confer with Mark about this right away when we first started about the information that we have in our minutes. Because we don't want to get into any problems. You know, we had problems with the ethanol situation in our minutes.
Did you use a microphone?
I can't, sorry, Dave. There we go.
There we go, thank you. I just had to hit it a few times. We had problems with the, with our ethanol, with the lawsuit because of our minutes. And so I, I personally don't want to see any, I don't want to see any problems with any of our minutes having too much information to where we would put ourselves in that kind of a situation again.
Well, this is the first time I've ever heard that it was illegal supposedly.
Well, I, I, if I could just make a point of clarification, I don't think anybody said it's illegal. I think what, what we're up against here is what has always been done and, and what is best practice. And coming from a different organization, Alana came from a different organization. The previous clerk was trained by the previous clerk, who was trained by the previous clerk, who was trained by the previous clerk. And this was kind of one of the first times, maybe new people came into the organization. So I understand that, that's the way, it's the way it was always done, and that's what folks are used to. But I think we need to also look at what's, what's the best practice and what potentially could put us in danger in the future. There is a record of every meeting. They're all recorded, they're all, they're all published on YouTube. They're all available to, to view at any time. So actually, every single word you say at this meeting is, is put in public record. It may not be what we're used to, but that doesn't necessarily always mean that it was right. So I think that was the point, you know, that, that Alana was making. I, I, again, I, I, I don't, I don't know how, what, what leeway we even have to have the discussion we're having right now. And should it be reflected in the minutes, if we're not even having this discuss, if we shouldn't even have this discussion? You know, it, it comes into those situations that, I, I just, again, I just caution folks on, just because it was always done that way, doesn't necessarily mean that it was the best or even right way to do it. And, and the other, the other comment I would make is, just, just for the, for everybody's help in these situations, these are the types of questions that maybe are best placed before a meeting, so we don't have this conversation like this at a council meeting, where it shows, you know, discourse and, and potential disorganization at, at a council level. Because again, all of this is being recorded right now.
Well, I, I don't, she's sitting there scowling at me, and I, I don't mean any intent, any bad things about, I was just saying that that's what we were used to having was.
I guess I would cautious, caution anyone, and you're an expert in facial interpretation, to label anybody's expression on their face. I don't think it's respectful, and I don't think it's helpful. So we'll put this on another agenda, Mark, unless you have something to say about it.
No, I would recommend that you move on. The, the particular item that was, I guess, wasn't quite, I'm not quite sure how, how, how you got to this right now. I understood that basically it was, you were bringing down 4A and 4D2 from the consent agenda. And normally in the past, you then brought that under new business and then would have acted on the consent agenda. I don't, so I think at this point in time, you've not done that yet. Is that correct?
Correct. Just kind of moved a little bit faster.
All right, so I, and, and just, it's, I'm not, not concerned on an illegal basis because they're all noticed. But I would just suggest in the future, it'd be easier to, for me to follow in terms of knowing what, what's going on and advising. And I think for all of you in, in acting on it and, and for followers, so that if items are brought off the consent agenda, then move them down to wherever you want under new business. And, and then act on the consent agenda as it remains, and then move on to the new business items. So that's, that's just a pointer for the future. And if, at this time, of course, you've, you're moving on to 4A under new business, and that, as long as you've done that, I would suggest concluding on that. And I understood that there was a request to change in the minutes of vote that Alder Striegel had made on something, and, and so, and then she had just made, then a comment about adding additional information into the minutes. And I think if there were specific items that should be added under, that would be appropriate to comment on this time. I would think probably going beyond the more general matter, I would suggest that would be more appropriate to go under perhaps all the person reports requesting that that be something to be addressed in a future council meeting. That certainly is an appropriate discussion. And I, I, so, and I'm not going to make any comments. I'm more upon it at this time. I don't think that's appropriate for the reasons I've just stated. So what I would recommend, Mayor, is to then act on item 4A that was moved into new business, which I understood to be to probably approve with that one amendment that you made. Is that correct, Alder person?
Well, I, I also had for 4D on plan commission approval of the site for 927 West High Street.
Right, but that's a separate item, so I'm just suggesting, since your discussion was on the matter of the minutes, if perhaps the council should act on that first, is all I'm suggesting.
So we want a motion to approve the minutes with the amended correction.
On the vote.
By Maxine on the vote.
Correct. That'd be my, that'd be my suggestion, yes.
Is there a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Please read the motion back.
Oh, me or Alana? I'm sorry.
The motion is, is to approve the minutes with the correction on item 5C to indicate that Alder Striegel voted no.
Is that correct? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes. Now, are we moving on to 4D2? And then we'll go back and approve the consent agenda?
You can do that if you like, as long as you already done it that way with the other item, go ahead and.
Okay.
Move that down.
4D2, plan commission item, approve the site plan for 927 West High Street. So what is your intention?
I need to abstain. I need to abstain from this motion since it involves my son.
Okay. So all of those in favor of approving? I'm sorry, that's what I meant. Can I have a motion to approve the site plan for 927 West High Street? Is there a second? Any further discussion?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Abstaining? All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Back to the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion. We approve it? Yeah, with the changes to the plan commission, 4D2, and to the amended.
Minutes.
Minutes from last meeting.
Is there a second? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We got a consent agenda approved. 5A, new, five, new business, 5A, discussion and possible action on resolution 2015-9, amending the City of Milton 2015 annual budget.
This is just a formal budget amendment for the decision to fund 100% of the fire department study with RW management.
Is there a motion to approve resolution 2015-9? Still move. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Okay, we already did 5B. She already abstained on the previous one. Okay, all right, 5C. Discussion and possible action on council policy for public comment during the city council meetings. And there is a memo.
Yeah, I can just kind of set it up, and then I'll, I'll let, I'll let it take from there. Folks recall at the last meeting, there was a discussion about the, the procedure for public comment at the council meeting. We were directed at that time, we as a staff was directed at that time to prepare a, a council policy that could potentially be adopted this evening, that would reflect the wishes of the council at that time or, or during that discussion. And Alana has prepared a, a, a draft policy that she included in the packet that we believe kind of encompasses those requests from the council at that time. So I think it would be appropriate to, I guess, discuss it, or if, if any, any changes to it, anything that we may have missed or misconstrued. Alana, do you have anything else, Dave?
No, that was actually set up really well. So I tried to create this as a guidelines that the public will be able to look at to get information on how they can address the council. There was a lot of discussion, really good points brought up, and so I hope I worked all of it into this policy. But basically balancing the need for some of the structure in our meeting with your very strong desire to make sure the public knows that they are welcome to talk. So we would like to encourage people to sign up ahead of time if they know they'd like to address the council. But if we are discussing some, we, if you are discussing something and they would like to speak on it, there is an option for them to raise their hand. They do have to wait to be acknowledged by the chair. And then they could come up to the podium, and we would still ask them to sign in at that point for the, for the record.
Yes, I'm wondering why it had increased from three minutes for non-public hearing agenda items to five minutes for public hearing agenda items.
I, I had that in my notes, that we were talking about five or three minutes. So I could definitely change that if you don't like the five minutes. Because there was also a discussion of whether or not people can speak more than once, which was unclear. So I just, I took a best.
I mean, I know we did discuss that at one point, that they should only be able to discuss once. And then we talked about it further, thinking that something might come up when the issue had been discussed, that, well, we should relent and give them an opportunity to speak. But I, which I don't disagree with, because sometimes things can come up once the issue has been talked through. But I wouldn't want to then extend the, the time further to five minutes. I would prefer to keep it to the three minutes at that point as well.
Any other comments? Any other comments?
Yeah, when I opposed this to begin with, when I was sitting out there, I don't believe that this was even voted on by the council. And at the time, Mayor Fraser said, well, we'll try it. In last meeting, we all talked, and I know it doesn't reflect it, but I was with the opinion that the general rule was that no signatures, if you wanted to sign up, that you were here, fine. And that we were to provide agendas. That's the way it's been. And I know where all this changes, some changes are good and some are not. This is still a public meeting, and people should be able to speak whenever they want to speak. That's my opinion.
Where in this does, do you find that they can't speak when they want to speak?
Because they've got to sign up, and, and we have this thing, just like Larry tonight. He had to talk before anything came up on the agenda. That's not right.
That's actually not true.
That was not true. He had the option of doing.
You gave him the option tonight, but before you never had the option.
Okay, but, all right, so we have new council members, and we have a new mayor. So I think we have to stick to the document that was presented. Alana did a lot of work on it. She's really trying to make everybody happy, and you get, and guess what? We're not all going to be happy. So there is no reason why we can't have people sign in, is my opinion. I don't think it makes people afraid to speak at all. So that is just my two cents on it. Is there any other changes that you want seen to the document besides limiting it to three minutes?
I like the three minutes, and I, I agree with Teresa that if the, if it would, were to go to it that, to where somebody might want to add a secondary comment. And I don't know if that actually means three minutes, but I, I just feel like we need to be open about that. But I don't, I guess I don't have a problem with people signing in, because, I mean, for me, previous to this council term, when I was on council, I always liked to find out the name of the person that was there so I could confer with them after and make, and.
They give you that when they get up to talk.
Right.
They give you her name.
It does indicate here, Maxine, if you read, that it, at the bottom, that you are not required to speak in on a public hearing item. And so if, if you get into the middle of a discussion and you find that you need to, to stand up and discuss it, at that point, you, you do not have had to.
You're not required.
You're not required to speak and sign up at that point. If you want to speak on a non-public hearing item, yes, you need to have signed in prior to this to make a, a presentation or a, a, make a statement prior to the start of the meeting about a subject that you wish to address the council on. There are two different types of things.
I just say I'm against them having to sign in to be able to speak.
Well, you need to be a part of the public record if you're going to come to the podium prior to the start of the meeting.
I don't understand how you want more stuff at the minutes, but then you want less stuff when people talk.
All I can think of is, you know, if we discuss sidewalks, we're going to have need for timeframes.
But out of the, all the years that we've sat here and you've sat here, you name me one time we had any problem because people didn't sign that note first to, to talk. We never, ever had a problem.
But it doesn't mean that we shouldn't be more effective, more efficient, and have more best practices. We have, we really do have to move the council along into the future. We just have to. There's going to be some changes that I don't like, that other people don't like, but it doesn't mean that we can't move forward. I mean, we're just going to have to figure out a way to do this. So I guess I would entertain a motion to approve this recommended council policy with the change of three minutes. Is that, is that a motion that somebody would like to make?
That we recommend the city council approve policy with amending it to three minutes for the public hearing length of the statements for the public comment during the city council meetings.
I'll second the motion.
Is there any further discussion? Dave, you want to chime in here?
Can you repeat that motion?
Yes.
I can't hear.
Okay, that, I recommend, move that the, we recommend that the city council approve policy for public comment during city council meetings with the amended five minute to a three minute length of time under public hearing guidelines.
Is there a second? Okay.
Did you have an opinion on that, Dave?
I, I guess the, the issues that were brought up. Best by this, with the exception of the sign in and. And I get Maxine's thoughts, sir, that whenever anybody held up their hand and he was asked to come up to the podium to ask their question or make a statement, they stated their name and their address in Milton and the court recorded it. There was no need for a formal sign in, you had a record of it. I think we're getting hung up on this sign in thing and we don't need to.
Okay, there's a motion and there's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we need a roll call vote? Can I take a roll call vote because I couldn't hear everybody? Alder Adams.
I'm more totally yes.
Alder Adams, aye. Alder Clark?
Aye.
Alder Clark, aye. Alder Lauter?
Very reluctantly, aye.
Alder Lauter, aye. Alder Striegel?
No.
Alder Striegel, no. Alder Zajak?
Aye.
Alder Zajak, aye. Alder Roush?
Aye.
Alder Roush, aye. Motion passes. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is discussion and possible action creating a citizen council committee to review city council policies and procedures. Kick it off.
Okay, this item was placed on the agenda at the request of Mayor Welch and also several conversations that we had, both with council members and with members of the public to look at. The conversation started with the council vacancy discussion that's been taking place for the last couple of weeks. And in those discussions with Alder Welch, she also thought, or Mayor Welch, she thought it'd be a good idea to have this committee look at a number of council items that could potentially bring recommendations to the council. So with that, we prepared just this brief memo and then kind of left it open to Mayor Welch and the council to decide how they wanted to see this structured, if at all.
Okay, so this became an issue virtually immediately on the first council meeting that I chaired. And we had already, there were already some talks about how we do primaries, when should we have a primary, when do people get sworn in? And this just seemed something that fit in with that. So after that first agenda and many conversations that took place, including with all of you who were aware that we were going to place this on the agenda at the second meeting in May, we decided, primarily me, that in order to encourage citizen participation in this and because there is a glaring lack of council policy and consistency that has taken place over the years and in the absence of any council policies, I have deferred to the powers and duties of Wisconsin mayors and the state statutes. And that's what I will continue to do. I just feel like the mayor should follow the state statutes whenever it's appropriate and there's not other guidelines in place. I'm not sure really what else to do because I believe the citizens deserve a council that follows the statutes. So those are some items that we wanted this ad hoc committee to address. This is a great committee for Teresa Roush, our council president, to chair. And then we can decide how many citizens we want on it. And I guess I would maybe have one other council person on it and maybe two or three other citizens.
I would like to say that any council members should be welcome on it.
Well, they should be welcome to attend, but we are not going to hold a city council meeting or have a quorum. You know, do business as if we're working as a council. That's not the purpose of an ad hoc committee. So of course you can sit in on it, but unless you want to not have citizen, as much citizen input and you want to address each issue at a council meeting, I mean, those are the only other options I can think of. Mark, what are, what are your thoughts? I mean, we can't always have divisiveness and disagreeing when we're trying to address everybody's needs.
Well, I'm looking at the number of council people here and the number in the audience and saying that it is pretty much council consideration.
Well, if we always go by the number in the audience, I think we would never have anybody on our committees. And we have a lot of citizen participation on our committees. And just because you don't show up to every council meeting doesn't mean that you would not be interested in the subject matter. So our expectation is not that all of our citizens on every one of our committees show up to every one of our council meetings. It's just my thought, but Mark.
Well, just a practical issue, you can have as many council people as you want on any committee, of course, but once you have three or more, then you really do need to notice all of those as a council meeting as well. And no, Alana, I know it does that on certain meetings where it's anticipated that there may be three or more council members in attendance to consider city business, even if they're not going to vote. So you could have four on there if you want, but it has to be noticed as well as a council meeting. And I think that would not be appropriate, that would just be very difficult. Then you have a question, are you meeting as a council really, or are you meeting as a committee? So I think that's why traditionally try not to have more than two council members on any particular committee because then there, otherwise there is a confusion over whether or not it's being, it's really meeting as that committee or as the council. So it isn't that, it isn't valuable to have other council members in attendance, but to actually have them on the, as a member of that committee, when you have even three, you have a negative quorum. So then you have the, that conflict about how it's meeting.
So the correct way to make everybody happy is to notice the meeting if, you know, more than three, two or three council members wish to be on the board.
Well, I, yeah, I would say that you can do whatever you like, but it'd be my recommendation that there not be more than two council members actually on the committee and that since it's a topic of interest to the council, that there may well be more than two in attendance in a meeting of the committee, which is fine. But then there'd just be an appropriate notice that goes with that in the agenda. So it wouldn't prohibit any, as the mayor's ending, it wouldn't prohibit any council members from attending the meeting. But they, the council, only two of them would actually have the ability to vote on anything at a committee meeting. That's, that's, that's the distinction. And I know Alana knows how to notice something like that, so I would take care of that.
So it's a matter of notification. So by, if we don't have a limit of council members on this committee though.
We do have a limit of council members on the committee to two.
Okay, but, and I understand that and I think that that's an excellent idea because if we have more than two, then what we're basically doing is we're having a council meeting and the council is making that decision. And another thing that I, that I would suggest is that we do in fact have a lot of our committees that are active in the city and have already volunteered their time. And I'm wondering if maybe that's not where we would look for our citizen input?
My recommendation would be that we put something in the career and we see who we get for volunteers and they can fill out the citizen form. And just try to have some consistency here. And then if you all want to vote individually up or down who you want on this committee, I guess that's up to you. But I think that we should stick to how we've appointed citizens to committees in the past. And I don't envision that this committee is going to meet for longer than 60 days. I think this work can be done in 60 days and report back to the council with a recommendation. So from the first meeting date, 60 days out or, you know, wherever that council meeting falls in.
So. I think this is a very good idea. There's been the last four elections that we've had appointments and, you know, there's a lot of different opinions out there. People have said, you know, you need to be on the ballot and then people have said, nobody wants to run. And so I think that we should really do this. Are you looking for a motion?
I am looking for a motion.
I'll make the motion that we have a ad hoc committee that we create, a citizens council committee to review the city council policies and procedures with regard to our elections. And that that timeframe be a 60 day timeframe for their meeting and their, their motion.
Teresa will be the chair plus one other council member.
For Teresa to be the chair and one other council member.
And then you want to limit the number of citizens?
I think that maybe four citizens.
Okay.
Is appropriate.
Okay.
At the max.
Yeah.
I mean, you mean that if you only get a couple interests, then what do you think?
Okay, three. Okay.
I'll second the motion.
I would just make a, just a general comment or recommendation, take it, take it or leave it. I don't think it's necessary to put the 60 day requirement on there. I think once this group forms, they should, they would probably be better versed to set the timeframe on that. We won't have another vacancy likely until, if ever again. But the next logical one would be, would be April. So to put the 60 day timeframe on there may just, it may hamstring the committee. Obviously, they could come back and ask for an extension, but they would probably be able to make that determination. And maybe they'll say 60 days, I don't know.
So the thought behind that was not necessarily that the committee would have to be permanently disbanded, but I just didn't want this to linger on. Oftentimes our committees, they just, they don't, you know, without a set date. So that, that was my reasoning behind that. So not necessarily that this committee couldn't take up other issues, but those main issues that we have.
With regard to the, to the elections?
Elections and council vacancy appointments.
I would like very much to ask to be the second council member on this.
Well, that's the other thing, how do you determine the council person?
Well, if we could, if we could talk about this motion and then I guess we can talk, we can discuss how we determine the further, the next council member.
Well, I guess it's tied together. Do you appoint the second council member or do we ask to be on the committee?
I'm appointing Teresa and that's as far as it's going to go. So I guess, let's just talk about this motion and then we can decide on what the system will be.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand.
Yep, yep. So is there any further discussion on this motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
Because I don't think there was anything wrong with the procedure that we had if it had been followed, right?
Great, just to be clear, we didn't have a procedure in writing and it wasn't consistently followed because when you were appointed when Robert moved away, we didn't do interviews during that time either. So it's not always been.
I don't know what you did then, but I know other times we did interview and we had that.
Yes, correct.
Sometimes you interviewed and sometimes you didn't. In the past, whatever, few years, just to be clear, you did not always interview. You didn't interview with the previous mayor, we didn't interview when Maxine was appointed and we didn't interview when I.
Because she didn't run before.
Doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter that she ran before. In fact, if we went on that, she didn't get voted in and we didn't follow what the voters wanted. They picked three people. And the reason that Janesfield did interviews is because they didn't want to appoint the person that didn't win the election. So I'm not saying it was right or.
Dave Schumacher.
Right, and I'm not saying it was right or wrong. I just want to be clear that when council members make statements to the public, we have to make sure we are telling the public all of the facts. So that's my only point. And I know that you all care about this issue and I love that you care about this issue, don't get me wrong. That's why I immediately said, "Let's get a committee together and address everybody's concerns." And I'm happy that you're doing that. So moving on, how would you like to fill the vacant position on this, on this committee? How would you like to choose your council member, I guess?
Is there any other interests, I suppose, besides Nancy?
I would be interested.
Sure, up to three.
Two.
Well, Teresa's on it, Teresa's chairing it, so.
So we would need to just decide.
I'm, I'm fine with a vote, like we, a vote as we did for council president, a secret vote or putting everybody's name in the hat or, Mark, what are you saying?
You can't, can't have a secret, you can't have a secret vote, that's only by statute for the president.
For the president, okay. What would, Jeremy, are you interested?
I'll defer to the two women over here.
Okay, so I guess we can vote or we can just put names in the hat? I don't know what you want to do.
Just put names in the hat and let's just call it fair.
Okay, alright.
We've got two people that want to be on it, so.
You have, yeah, so you've.
Teresa's on it, she's the chair and one other person.
Nancy, oh, I thought Nancy.
Nancy and Linda both want, so we got, we only can put one more person on. And Mark, I think you're going to have to be the one that draws the name.
Yeah, look, this is all fair game now that it's on the table.
Oh my goodness, no, 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 you can't fatten us.
And I am happy with not, whatever is decided, is there chocolate in there?
Yes!
There was, there was.
What happened to it?
Okay, Mark, do you want me just to pass it down to you or? Okay.
Okay.
And I'm happy with whatever is decided.
I'm going to, I'm going to do a case study on this for my, for grad school, I think.
Alright.
Linda.
Okay. Nancy, Teresa and Linda will be the council members on it with Teresa chairing it.
Is that all right?
Alright, next item on the agenda.
Just make sure that we understand. And select it.
I lost my agenda.
General items.
General items.
I actually neglected to put the next meeting date on to the agenda. So the next meeting date is going to be June 2nd at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. General items. No more than three minutes, go.
And I will make the last general items. And this will be separate from my elder person.
You get three minutes for an elder person's report.
Alright, let's be tactical here, no, I'm just kidding.
Alright, I wanted to pass the word on that the FMA is doing a golf fundraiser for their scholarship fund. And that starts, golf starts at 12 o'clock. Sorry, twelve, the golf starts at 12 o'clock, the meal is at 6:00 and then there is an auction at 7:00. I also wanted to, I also wanted to let you know that next Thursday, May 26th, from 5:30 to 7:30, the gathering place, the chamber and the school district will be hosting a business after 5:00 to honor and thank Greg Linder from Air Products. Greg is retiring and during his time with Air Products, he has given numerous donations to the community in separate ways. And there is also a cash bar with that.
What was the date?
For the golf?
Linder.
Linder? That's May 26th from 5:30 to 7:30 at the gathering place.
Any other general items? Mayor and elder person reports. We'll start with Jeremy, do you have an elder person report?
No, thanks.
Maxine? Teresa? Nancy? Linda? Oh, Dave, I'm sorry, after Linda.
Okay, for the committees that I serve on, I would like to let everyone. I would like to let everyone know that the, on Memorial Day, there will be a service at Veterans Park where we will unveil the Gold Star Monument and the Purple Heart Monument. And this will happen before the silent march that will be led by the Boy Scouts that will go down to the. And this will happen before the silent march that will be led by the Boy Scouts that will go down to the cemetery.
So it's at eight thirty?
Yes, it's at eight thirty. Um, and I also wanted to let you know, for those looking for adult, um, activities, that the Y M C A is doing an adult soccer league this summer. And, um, the Parks and Rec has a scrap metal drive taking place. D P W will pick your scrap metal up, or you can drop it off, and this is for our Milton City only. There's flyers at the Milton family, Pig, Piggly Wiggly, Ace Hardware, and the money will be going to our Parks and Rec. And the scrap and metal drive goes through June fourteenth. And last but not least, I hope that everyone got the email that I forwarded to you from Mr. Pugh Gate commenting on the commercial that Tourism and Development did. I'm very happy to say that those, those people on that committee worked very diligent to, to bring you that commercial. And I look forward to more commercials.
Dave? Okay, well, for the mayor's report, I wanna say that, um, I spent the majority of the weekend, including most of Friday, um, down at the Civil War Days, and it, I believe it was a success. Um, things ran as smoothly as they possibly could. We had, um, almost eleven, I think eleven different school districts represented, about twenty-seven buses. And we were able to, um, direct traffic, load, unload buses, um. I didn't hear of any reported injuries on anything, um, and everybody had a lunch to eat. Uh, there was a lot of volunteers involved. I, um, wrote about it in my first column for the Courier, so that'll be coming out. So I talked a little bit about that and what a positive experience it was, and how well organizations worked together throughout the community to put that on. I mean, there were so many people and different agencies, and the police, and fire, and city staff, and historic preservation, and SWEPT, and just, it goes on and on and on. So, and, you know, obviously the Civil War reenactors, so it was great. Um, and I'm very happy that we are able to do it. I hope we can do it, um, again next year. And so I will do our closing activity.
Oh, boy.
Yep, and Al is very excited about it. Yeah, and I just want you to know that I didn't even call any of you guys ahead of time and prep you for this. So I think you did an excellent job for our first round. There were no plants in the audience, um, so. One thing, we'll all go around and say, um, we'll start with Inga. What's positive in the city of Milton this last Civil War of the mystery days?
Can you hear the question?
Nancy is coming in here.
What's positive in the city of Milton the last month?
Repeat it after me?
There you go.
Got it? Maya?
Oh, I'm on.
Alright, alright, so we'll start with Inga, and we'll go to Lieutenant Chesmore. And the question was, what is positive in the city of Milton the last month?
I'll be. Um. Wow, that's positive. I think the city's positive, um. Every day I come to work and I enjoy doing my job in the city of Milton. Today we had, somebody bought us pizza for lunch, just right at the police department. So I gotta say, it's a positive thing for, um, I talked to Lieutenant Marison, and, you know, to us, that's just like, somebody just comes in, Casey says, here's some pizza, somebody bought you guys pizza today. I think that's great.
So do I.
Most of the time, police department is not very, very well thought of, so when we do get that acknowledgement, it's, it's sort of refreshing, so.
Thank you. So Lieutenant Chesmore and, uh, the police staff got pizza today, that's awesome. Linda?
I'm gonna say our first big concert at Goodrich Square.
Nancy, thank you, Linda.
What I was very surprised and enjoyed was the, uh, Civil War church service. The gentleman that led the church service is a retired priest, and he was saying in the Civil War, you only are allowed twenty minutes to be away from your guns, and that guy talked very well for nineteen minutes and thirty seconds. It was a fascinating study in how things were run.
Thank you, and I, I got the last two minutes, I think, of that. Teresa?
Um, bringing in the students, um, what, twenty-five hundred? Um, you know, you can tell I'm an educator, but I, I just thought that was cool to have that many kids here as part of that reenactment, and, nice.
Thank you. Alana?
Um, well, we are actually just going through license renewal time, and, um, I've had a really good response from everyone. Everyone's been very cooperative, um, and I'm, I'm excited that this process seems to be going very smoothly for my first time around.
Thank you very much. Oh, um, the mayor, um. I, I'm gonna repeat what I said before, um, I was just so impressed with how this small committee, um, was able to put on this big weekend event. I mean, it wasn't like there was ten of us, there was like, you know, in and out five or six, and not everybody could attend every time. But it was a, and just, it's a testimony to how, um, a small group of people can have such a positive and huge impact on a city. And, um, that was great, and I, I just wanna thank everybody for it. Al?
I have been here for, for eight months and, uh, and three days, not that I'm helping. And, uh, I continue, and I've said this to many people on staff and many people in, in the community. You know, before I came here, I spent over ten years working for the city of Janesville, and it was all I really knew. Um, and coming here, I continue to be surprised, shocked, and impressed at the level of service that the citizens of Milton get. It is well, I mean, it is leaps and bounds beyond what they are accustomed to in Janesville. And I can say that as someone who lived in Janesville for thirty years, somebody who worked there for ten years, um, somebody who paid taxes there for, property taxes for a long time. The amount of service that we provide in Milton is unbelievable, in a, in a good way. And, uh, it's, you know, from the police department in, in how they involve themselves in the community, to Howie's crews and the services they provide, and how approachable they are, um, you know, and, and I, I, I think we do a pretty good job at City Hall, too. Uh, it is, uh, I, I'm shocked, and just yesterday, Howie and I had a meeting with, uh, with a potential developer, and, uh, a question came up, and Howie answered it, and I said, wow, that's, we, we really are willing to do that here in Milton. And that come, that happens all the time, and it's, it's something that we should be proud of. Um, it's something that, you know, I hope folks, uh, get an opportunity to realize how, how lucky we are. And, uh, and we're able to do that, again, at a cost of service that is lower than any city in the entire county. So it's amazing, that's a, that's a direct reflection of the commitment that we have from this group of people up here in order to provide the budgets that we have, and from the, the dedicated work staff that we have. It's, uh, it's impressive, I mean, it really, really is, and I, I know a lot of folks who are up at this table that have lived in Milton, uh, you know, their whole life and, or, uh, you know, or a good portion of it, and it's, um, it's a, it's, it's something we should be proud of. So that was a really long one.
Thank you. Maxine?
Well, I ju, I just think everything that the city has done, like the, um, this last weekend and all the weekends, the different programs they've had, they've done very well, and, and, uh, I think we're also very fortunate to have our police force, too. We don't have all the shootings and what have you that Madison and all the rest of the places have, so.
Thank you. Jeremy?
Covering something that's not on there, I guess I can address a few things. Northside recently had their track and field day up at, uh, the high school, and I got to participate at my, uh, uh, U B A watch.
I was gonna question that.
Echoing what, um, Al said, you know, there's obviously a lot of people in the city and the town, or in the city that cares about what's going on, and, um, it's, it's evident by, you know, everybody who's involved here, um, clearly. Transition that the, the police department has made, it is, it's probably an imperative one that we should mention. It goes along with also what, what Maxine said. I wanna address that, too.
Thank you. Dan? Dave, I mean.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, for recent positive, uh, events, this weekend we are to, to top. That was a major achievement pulling that off, I think it's great. And I, as you said, Mayor, I think we need to try and get that done again next year.
Dan?
Peggy, Peggy backing off what Al said a little bit, we just completed the audit, um, the annual audit, and it is a testament to all the departments in the city that with the level of service and with the limited budget discussions we have every fall, that we're able to return money to the fund balance to, uh, allow us to do, uh, large level projects like this building by simply returning money over a period of years and then using half a million dollars of that to build this building. And a, a nice clean audit opinion is really good for everyone here.
Thanks, Dave and Dan. Um, Howie?
Um, the amount of people that helped two weeks ago on the Make a Difference Week for all the volunteer groups, for the donations and the cleaning up the parks and other areas.
Let's add our rocking commercial to that list.
We rock.
Larry, would you like to add anything?
Um, yeah, believe it or not. I'm very impressed on your ability to address the difficulty issues and still come to consensus. That doesn't happen real often.
Thank you. It does take a little bit of effort. But we all like each other at the end of the day.
Well, and a lot of organizations aren't able to make that happen.
Mm-hmm, and that's just something that I wanna continue to work on, and I'm glad that you brought that up. Thank you. I started with Inga.
Then you got the easier one.
Um, I, I really wanna thank you guys for being, um, so open-minded and participating in these activities. And I do want them to be fun, and I want them to be strength, uh, strength-based, and keep us focused on the positive because it's really easy to not focus on the positive, and this is a good exercise for us all. So, um, Director of, or City Administrator, do you have anything?
I, I, I don't have a whole lot to add, other than, you know, we've talked about a lot of things tonight, and, uh, you know, really, the, the hot topic of conversation is the Civil War days, and, um, you know, in, in, in my position, um, it's, I get, I think I get the unique experience of kind of seeing how everybody kind of works together, um, and, and not having to jump in and say, okay, the city needs to take this over because somebody's never gonna be able to handle this without us being there. And then it happens, and it's great, and we have, it's based on the volunteers, and, you know, Cory over at the Milton House, and Brian, and F F A, and Inga, and, and Linda, and Anisa, and, and, and.
Right.
Everybody who was a part of that committee and, and beyond, um, it's nice when that comes together, and, uh, and, and there's not just kind of this expectation that, ah, it's gonna happen. If, if people take, take the kind of bull by the horns, so I know it's been a hot topic of conversation, but it's something that should be, should be, you know, talked about often.
Thank you. The Director of Public Works.
Nothing new tonight, all, all the stuff's done already. Oh, the Girl Scouts did a lot of hours at the library, so they volunteered for that.
And isn't the Cruzan family doing something with some?
They're, they're taking care of the, they're gonna do the maintenance on the beds out in front of the library for the summer, so.
Yes, so thanking to the Cruzan family and their grandkids. Um, Chief of Police, Acting Chief of Police?
You know, I, I guess the police department, I've lived with this for thirteen years, so every day just seems like the same to me. I'm sure to some people here, they, it's probably really big news, but to me, it's just everyday stuff. Um, I, I can say is that I had, um, emailed with Stacy up at the library, we're gonna be up at the Here for the Day for the library kickoff, June fifteenth. So we'll be taking a car up there to the library for an hour or so when they do their library kickoff, so.
So we can all dress up as superheroes.
If you'd like, I'm sure the library would love that.
That would get Milton on the news. Thank you. Um, the Director of the Library is not here, and we have no Joint Fire Commission or Joint Fire Department here. City Clerk, Deputy Treasurer.
Um, the, it, it is liquor license renewal time, operator license renewal time, it's in full swing, um, and it seems to be going very smoothly, so, um, very busy in the office with that right now.
Thank you. Finance Director?
Got nothing.
Okay, alright, um, so Teresa, could you, um, read the closed session item?
Considering a motion convened into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen eighty-five, param one, param F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personal problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons which, if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect on the reputation of any person referred to such as, as such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations.
Um, can I get that motion?
Second.
Okay, Jeremy seconded it. All those in favor? I opposed. Okay, we're gonna move in.